Good evening. It's six o'clock and this is the Board of Trustees meeting for Wabash City Schools for Monday, December 16th. Roll call.
Rod Kelstrom is absent.
Okay, having a quorum will call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wabash City Schools provides a relevant and rigorous education founded upon relationships to ensure each student is college and career ready for success in the global community. Welcome. We have some recognitions of visitors tonight. First, we have the state finalists in Samsung's Solve for Tomorrow Contest. I'll have you rise and you can introduce yourself and...
I am Jason Ozwald.
I'm Justin Evans.
Can you tell us about, I don't know, which one of you wants to tell us about what exactly this is? What'd you do?
So, the Samsung Solve Tomorrow Contest is where a bunch of people in the state and also mostly in the nation are, schools are competing to see who can build something that will benefit our, both the community here and for the entire US and maybe even farther out. So, for us, we designed a handability device to help people with hand disabilities, write and draw both electronically and also possibly practically if we continue to deal with it or working on it. It's mounted on the wrist and two straps and is also designed to either do it in front or on either the right or left panel, which handles most of it.
And so you actually made the device? We should have had you bring that in, demonstrate.
It was pretty neat. They programmed it so it senses like intel so you can... Our goal is going to change the features on that software by using that ability to change color and pattern or change the razor so they don't have to... It's pretty neat. They've done really well with it. There's five, five other teams in the state, two from Arlington South, two from Central Grove, and then one from South Adams. So, we're competing against a pretty big school. I think we have a good shot.
And when is that?
We'll find out in March. I think their, the next phase is due January 7th, I believe.
Okay. And then you have some team members that aren't present. Who else? Okay. Any other questions from the board for them?
I'm just happy to, like, this is back-to-back for at least, I know Mr. Denny, I don't know if you guys were on the last team or not, but like, I think that's so cool. I love to see this in our schools and watching you guys just think outside the box and do something that could be really good for the, for our community and beyond is really awesome. So, keep, keep doing it and striving to help out and help others. That's awesome. Thank you.
So, if you win state, will you go on to national?
Yes. So, at this point, we received $2,500 from Samsung and stuff. If we win state, we would get $12,000. And then, yeah, there's one version each state that competes and up to $100,000 for your classroom.
Wow.
Pretty significant, yeah. On top of that, we just, today coming out, we got $20,000 for, from PLTW for classroom supplies and for engineering. They had some, want to give news for us later.
That's awesome. Thank you. And then we also will be recognizing the boys' cross-country team. You want to introduce yourselves and tell us your grade, how many years you've run cross-country, and if you're a senior, what are you doing next year?
I'm Bobby. I'm a junior and I've been running cross-country since fifth grade. So, that's seven years now. It's kind of crazy.
I'm Camden. This is, I'm a freshman. This is my fifth-year member.
I'm Isaiah Cordis. I'm a junior. This is my sixth-year member.
I'm Matt McSummers. I'm a junior and this is my seventh-year member.
I'm Ezra Church. I'm a sophomore and I've been running since sixth grade, so whatever that would be.
A long time.
I'm Matt Niles. I'm a junior. I've been running for four years.
I'm Jason Ozwald. I am a senior. I've been running for eight years. I still haven't decided on which college I plan to go to, but I plan to go to the Camp One Engineering.
My name is Christian Stanton. I'm a senior and I've been running since sixth grade, so seven years. And I plan on majoring in psychology at Taylor University and pursuing a career in counseling.
I'm Jonas Church. I'm also a senior. I've been on the team for six years and I'm gonna run cross-country and track at the University of Calvin in Grand Rapids, Michigan. And I plan to major in entrepreneurship and minor in graphic design.
I'm Kaden Burchett. I'm a junior. I ran in eighth grade and I came back and ran this year as well, so kind of my second year of running. But it's all those cars, but I'm not a senior, but I might be joining Jonas at Calvin, hopefully, in another year. But I don't know yet.
Thank you. Well done.
Mr. Evans, you want to fill in the blanks on the season?
I want to say, two people are here. Jase, he's a senior. He's been running since sixth, no, fifth grade, right? Jason? Since fifth grade and he's gonna go to Grace next year. He wants to be a trainer, his goal, physical trainer. So, he's gonna do all that. And then Drew, who's been sick, is he even in school? No. He's sent me a message earlier that he's feeling well. He's a junior. He ran through middle school and this is his first year in high school as well. Season was awesome. These guys put in the work that no one sees day in and day out. You probably seen him run the streets around town here and there throughout the summers, the county roads throughout the summer. We're fortunate to be able to go to some cool places and run with the guys. Just an awesome community. Throughout the tournament, they've just continually impressed as far as results go, beat some of the biggest schools and competed against some of the biggest schools in the state. And we weren't scared to do it. We just knew that if we want to achieve greatness, we have to beat and compete against the best and we can, we can run against every need and that's what they did. And when it came down to the more stressful parts of the season, they were just calm and collected because they've been there and they've done that throughout the regular season. So, I mean, I couldn't be more proud of what they've accomplished. But I also like to point out, I mean, they're here getting recognized for athletic achievements, but these are all upstanding men in the community and in school. Like, you will not find a better group of guys to be around than these guys. They're just good teammates to each other, represent the community well, represent the school well. So, I think that's more important than any athletic achievement they could achieve.
And we're recognizing them because they went to state, right?
I would like to add that my son did cross-country for middle school this year and I got to see you guys firsthand and you guys are awesome. And you guys are awesome representatives of, just being good teammates, even for the middle schoolers. And so, I really wanted to say thank you for doing that because it makes them want to continue to walk, to, you know, run. You guys were in those shoes before. You know what it's like. Now everyone's at the time. And so, I just want to say thank you for doing that, being just good teammates, even for the middle schoolers. That's, that's a huge thing. So, appreciate doing that. And Mr. Evans, you're, you're a solid coach and I don't know if you get as much recognition as you should, but you're, you're an awesome coach and I know that these guys know it, but I want to make sure everyone else hears it too out loud. So, I appreciate your dedication to the, to cross-country because I see it and I hope others do as well.
I think it's pretty cool, too, that we have a future mechanical engineer and you were just recognized for the previous award, too, so...
Can I, uh, this is a side note. I didn't know Jonas was gonna be here nor that I was gonna wear this shirt today, but since Jonas is here, I'd like to give him a little shout-out. He won our competition for Bash Bags and the logo. And so, I will show it off. This is Jonas's logo. Yeah, so we, if you don't know, Bash Bags feeds kids weekly during the school year. We are at 560 kids each week right now, so there's a lot of Bash Bags going out every week. So, I appreciate Jonas and his artistic ability because I couldn't do it. I had no idea what it come up with, so I appreciate it.
Well, thank you all. You're welcome to stay or you're welcome to go to.
Always congratulations. Have a great year.
Yes. Item F. We have one revision. It's approved, approved revision four dot J. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Revision passes. I don't think there's anyone in the audience that would like to comment on an agenda item anymore. So, consent agenda. We have minutes from December 2nd, 2024. Some items of claims, donations. We have an anonymous donation of $100 to the Hungry Kids Fund. Thank you for that. And we have some items of financials. I'll accept a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Okay.
Discussion.
I want to start by thanking for, thanking whoever made the anonymous donation. And then we will move on to our financial report. All right. So, as always, we'll start with our revenue and expense report. Revenue was just a tad lower than what we had projected. That was mainly due to the revenue that we're getting from our basic grant. That was about $64,000 less. And that's due to our drop in enrollment. That will be for November and December. It did drop it down to just under a million, but starting in January, will go up to just over a million. Also, our cafeteria reimbursements were about $35,000 less than what we had projected. We did not receive our October or November cafeteria reimbursements from the state until early December. And they totaled about $153,000. Our accounts payable expenses were just a little bit lower than what we had projected, which is a good thing. And our salary expenses were a bit higher than what we had projected, but that was due to the one-time stipends of $600 that we paid to all of our teachers. And those were paid out on the November 22nd payroll. So, when you look at our projection and our actual, we were projected to have a net income of about $69, almost $70,000. We ended with a net loss of just over $6,700, knowing that we had those unplanned stipends, which were about $58,000. This isn't surprising and not really anything that I'm concerned about for the month. Moving on to our key fund balances. Our ed fund remains just over 1.5 million. Operations looks like it's in a little worse shape than last year. However, we have to factor in that tax anticipation warrant. We only owe $200,000, whereas last year we owed $400,000. As of today, we have not received notification of how much we will get on our tax draw. They're gonna try to get me the numbers tomorrow, so that will tell us how much, after we pay the $200,000, how much more we're going to get. Last year, we didn't get anything extra. This year, we will. So, we'll see that number drop a little bit. Rainy day continues to be just over $400,000. Overall, our key funds are doing better than a year ago. At the end of November in 2023, the key fund balance was negative $219,000. And at the end of November this year, we were just a bit over $770,000. Next, we will move to our appropriation report. We'll start with our ed fund. And no, I don't want to rate that. Our revenue, we have collected 92.4% of what we had budgeted. So, once we get our December basic grant and any of the other little things, hopefully, we hit 100%, maybe even a little higher. When you look at our different expenses, I should have calculated 11 divided by 12, I think is like 91.3%. So, that's what we wanted to hit, maybe 92%. You can see, we do have a few lines that we are over, but we have several lines that are well below. So, when you look at the overall for our ed fund, we're at 83.9%. So, we have spent well below what our appropriations were for our ed fund. Moving to operations, we have collected 94.7% of our revenue. So, when we get our tax draw, again, we're hoping that we actually collected more than what we had budgeted for, what we had appropriated. We have a few lines that are a little bit above the appropriation. Again, we have several lines that are well below. Overall, we are at 93.7%, so we are very close. I know Shelley and I were talking about this and we were just, out of curiosity, we looked at last year. Last year, our operations, we ended at 153% of our appropriations. So, if we can end pretty close to 100%, I feel pretty good. We've made some good changes. Any questions?
We haven't touched any funds towards the roofing situation with Heartland yet. Have we? That would be coming out rainy day.
Yes. And so, when the budget was built, I put appropriations in rainy day for the line that is for repairs to buildings. And so, when the time comes, we will have to make two payments to Heartland. One will be in March and one will be in May. So, in January or February, we will need to pass a resolution saying it's okay to spend from rainy day. We don't have to do an additional appropriation request because I put it into the budget. So, we have permission to spend it, but the board still has to approve that we spend rainy day money.
Any other questions? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. The next regular scheduled board meeting will be Monday, January 6th, here at Wabash City Hall at 6:00 PM. There's some items of communication. No old business, new business. Item A, accept resignations from the following classified staff. One, Jenny Danny as fifth and sixth grade music teacher effective 11/18/2024. And two, Ashley Pelfrey as a special needs bus aide effective 12/16/2024.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Both of these employees are staying in their primary role. Mrs. Denny is our music teacher at OJ. Mrs. Pelfrey is an aide in the RISE room at the high school. They are staying in those roles. These were just extra duties that they had picked, picked up for us, which we greatly appreciated. And we do have replacements for both positions.
All those in favor of accepting the resignation, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item B, board to approve employee number 2021 FMLA leave request beginning on or around February 10th, 2025 through March 10th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I recommend that the board approve this FMLA request.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. C, board to approve the transfer request of Jed Phillips from PLTW at OJ Neighbors to PE at OJ Neighbors beginning 1/6/2025.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Phillips is currently our PLTW teacher at OJ. He has a strong desire to move into the PE position. Remember, last board meeting, Mr. Clancy, we approved him to go to the RISE room. I believe Mr. Phillips will do a great job in the PE position. He is currently on emergency permit and is taking transition to teaching classes, so he will continue those to get his license. We will now work to fill the PLTW position at OJ and we will look for a certified teacher. But depending on the applicants, we may need to replace that position with a teaching para.
All those in favor of approving the transfer, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Item D, board to approve hiring Madison French as a special needs bus aide effective 12/17/2024.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Ms. French will fill the bus aide position that Mrs. Pelfrey had been filling in for us. We want to welcome her to Wabash City Schools.
All those in favor of approving the hire, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. E, board to approve Alexandra Stahl as WMS/WHS permanent substitute teacher beginning December 17th, 2024.
Second.
Discussion.
Ms. Stahl has been a substitute teacher for our district. She will fill that second permanent subposition at the middle school and high school, so we have both of those filled. So, I'm excited to see coming back second semester, what our administrators say, how did this work out? And is this something that we want to continue for next year? So, we're excited to have her in that position for us.
All those in favor of approving the hire, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. F, board to approve the request for St. Bernard School to use a WCS bus and driver for a field trip on December 13th, 2024 to Welburk Assisted Living Wealth Facility. St. Bernard will cover the cost of fuel and the driver's wages.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
St. Bernard made this request after our last meeting. We were able to provide them with a driver and a bus. They will pay for the driver's wages as well as mileage, which covers the cost of fuel and wear and tear on the bus.
All those in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. G, board to approve revisions to the 2025 through 2026 school calendar. The third quarter will be moved from March 6th to March 13th and our staff PD slash parent-teacher conference will be moved from March 12th to March 19th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
So, we're recommending these two changes. One, it will balance our third and fourth quarters. The way we had it, it was, third quarter was quite a bit shorter than fourth quarter. And it also will align with the schools that feed into Heartland Career Center.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the revision, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Revision passes. Item H, board to approve to use $997.60 from the education fund to cover stipends slash benefits that were not covered by the teacher appreciation grant.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
So, we have received our teacher appreciation grant dollars. We received $51,327.29. Teachers that were employed with us last year and are still employed will receive the following gross amounts. If they were rated effective, they'll get $480. If they're rated highly effective, they'll get $600. We are required by state law to give the highly effective teachers 25% more than the effective teachers. The grant covers both the stipends and the benefits. With the stipends amount, we are recommending, along with FICA and teacher retirement fund contributions, we end up being short the $997, so we're requesting to cover that amount from our ed fund. We would rather go over and use money from ed fund because if we cut it very close and calculations are off, if we don't expend that whole $51,327, we have to send it back to the DOE. So, I would rather go over a little bit. Our ed fund is in good shape. And those were nice amounts that worked with the 25%.
Any questions from the board? All those in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. I, board to approve a hard-to-fill position stipend of $2,000 for Marcus Clancy. The stipend is in our collective bargaining agreement and we have consulted with the association. Mr. Clancy has signed an agreement to remain in the position for this school year and the following two school years.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
We are recommending to provide this, Mr. Clancy, with this stipend. We've done this with a couple other teachers in hard-to-fill positions. He has started his coursework to obtain a special education license. And if he would leave Wabash City Schools before the end of the 26, 27 school year, he will be required to pay back a prorated amount of the stipend.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the stipend, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. J, approve the transfer of Natasha Whitney from second grade at OJ Neighbors to Wabash High School Business effective January 6th, 2025.
So moved.
Discussion.
Mrs. Whitney previously taught math at the high school. She has a business degree and would like to move into this position. We are pleased to be able to allow her to make this transfer and Mrs. Philippi will now begin looking for a second grade replacement.
Will our, one of the subs that we have, just how are the full-time subs, be filling in for that position?
We hope to have somebody in place before we start back in January.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Items from superintendent.
First, I want to start by saying that our thoughts and prayers are with the two families who lost their sons this past weekend. We know that this is a very difficult time for them as well as for our school family. We do have supports available for our students who may be struggling at this time. So, if there's any parents out there who their, their sons or daughters are having a tough time, please get ahold of the high school. Just want to congratulate our young men and Mr. Denny for being named state finalists, finalists in the Solve for Tomorrow Contest. Like you mentioned, it's the second year in a row and I think that's just awesome. We have many holiday events this week. I've looked forward to attending a few of them. We have four more days before Christmas break, so I hope all of our students, staff, and families have an enjoyable and relaxing break. When we come back, Monday, January 6th, it's a staff PD day. So, students do not return to school until Tuesday, January 7th, 2025. And we'll get some reminders out on social media, so parents remember that that first day back is staff PD.
Okay. Items from chief operations officer.
I don't have anything tonight.
Okay. Other items from board members. Jade?
I have nothing tonight.
Jason?
Notice that we are a red wagon district again, so that means that our, our kids and staff are giving people and so that's really cool that they give the Riley. So, that's kudos to all those who are helping with that. Also, notice that we have several teams and even some staff that were helping with getting Bash Bags and Elks just around the community with like food service and all that stuff, just to, you know, help out around the holidays. And so, I just love how our school district is, you know, community-focused. And so, that's, to me, that's a big deal, just helping out where they don't necessarily, you know, they don't need the services, but they're helping out those who do. And then you already talked about the engineering team, which is really cool. And then just, again, just the families of Sean and Cameron and just keeping them in prayer and just unimaginable, just waking up to that kind of news. It's just, it'd be difficult to get through. And so, just praying for them and keeping the students who know them and, you know, knew them from our school in prayer as well, so, as well as staff. And lastly, just Merry Christmas and hopefully we get a rest full-time for all the staff to kind of rest up and the kids to get a little break, too, so...
Thank you. Jason had a lot of what I was gonna say, but, no, it's okay. That was good. Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate my apologies to the families of the two boys lost their lives this weekend. And then I wanted to kind of piggyback on what Jason said. Megan Defoe ran a fundraiser for Bash Bags just out of the blue for fun, just to see how much she could get. And she ended up getting enough food or money to cover a whole week's worth of food for 560 kids and then went out and purchased it all. And our seventh and eighth grade basketball team came and delivered it all, which was wonderful. And so, yeah, I think all that food went out this week. She got Dow's Orchard to donate apples for the week. It was our last week that we did not have McClures giving us apples, so that was great. So, I wanted to thank her for that as well. On another note, I did want, I know our board has discussed it and I just want to say how sorry I am to Darren Sturch and her family. She is a board member on Heartland. They just found out her son has leukemia and they've been spending a lot of time at Riley trying to get him better right now. And so, I know that during our basketball game, we all went out and said a prayer. The team went out and said a prayer with their, the North Miami basketball team and that's, I know she really appreciated that. So, just wanted to let her know that we are thinking of them as well, so...
Okay, thank you. I too just want to express my sympathy for the family and the friends of the two boys. It's just heartbreaking and, I mean, it's, yeah. And to tell everybody-
And to tell everybody to have an enjoyable Christmas break and we will see you back in January. With that, we're adjourned.